So it is unanimous, next item please.
Special reports and we're gonna switch these around, we're gonna go to report B first, Superintendent Student Advisory Council.
So we're gonna ask Ms. Charles to come up and we have some students to introduce the students. We have several students from the Student Advisory Council. It's now completed our third year, gets better every year. We actually this year expanded into the middle school and it's been really positive, so I'll let her introduce the students that were here and it's been a wonderful year for me. And again, I'd have to say of all the things going on, one of the best things I can say that has been done is just the connection with students and hearing their viewpoints. And I appreciate the work Ms. Charles has done on leading along with, I know we have Dr. Warner, Dr. Swaden and Ms. Norma Harb are also helpful.
Right, and let's not leave out Joanne, she helps us as well.
Oh, Joanne, yes, yes, of course.
But yes, it's been a great year. Good evening, Dr. Malaco and to all of the board members. This is our third year and just hearing all of the wonderful things that are happening in the district. The Superintendent Student Advisory Council is just one of those other initiatives that's really been great. We had about sixteen students this year from all of the high schools collectively. Probably about fifty-three students applied and it's an online application process that they go through. And it really takes the entire team working together to make it happen. We coordinate with Joanne in terms of the schedule, we do that well in advance. We did that like in April to begin in November because we know Dr. Malaco is so busy. So we set up those meetings so that every month, beginning in October, November, we begin to go around the district and have meetings and give the students an opportunity to talk about what's happening in the district, but also to hear from Dr. Malaco the things that are happening at the state level and within the district. So today I have four remarkable students who are joining me. We have Adam Bazey from Dearborn High along with two students from SO4, Zoe Ragula along with Gadi Bazia, and then we also have Mala Khalil. And they're going to come up and talk about their journey as advisory council members.
Good evening.
Hi.
Before we begin, we'd like to say it's always a pleasure and honor to stand before you and present. So, a quick note, we say SSAC a lot because it's typically a mouthful to say Superintendent Student Advisory Council. I even sometimes forget what it stands for. So I'd like to begin by speaking about our monthly meetings. Our monthly meetings are typically placed in different schools around the district. At times we were at Henry Ford College or Dearborn High School or Fortin and Etzel. And we'd have an itinerary and these discussions would follow the itinerary. We'd have the list of things that we'd speak through and most importantly, we'd also have lunch. I don't know if you guys can see, but we decided we'd like to show you guys our experiences through photos. And photo, place above, you can see photos from one of our meetings and as well as a time in which Marwa and I presented to Dr. Malaco some student creative projects from DCMST. And in these monthly meetings, we'd a lot of times discuss what was going on in our own schools as well as what's going on around the district and even on the state level. So a lot of times, Dr. Malaco would tie us into what's going on in Lansing even. He would a lot of times keep us informed with type of bills we're going to the house. He would typically bring up the gun bill in which he is vehemently opposing to have teachers and other individuals armed with weapons in school. That's just some of the things that we'd go through through these monthly meetings. These monthly meetings were a great place in which we could voice our concerns to Dr. Malaco if we ever saw an issue going on in our school or around us. And it was really empowering to be able to speak directly to our superintendent. So we really felt like our voices were being heard.
And just so you're aware, they can see on the screen down there.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Scotty Seiya. And in between these SAC meetings, we always had meetings with political officials discussing topics such as the gun in school bill. And it was very helpful to have students involved in these meetings knowing that they had an opinion and about the current events going on and that this is being discussed for their future. So it's very important for us to know that we matter in these situations and we have an idea of what we want to do other than that.
Hi, everyone, my name is Mala Khalil. One of the biggest projects that we worked on was the Martin Luther King Junior March or also the Real Dearborn March. This was my second year being involved in it and this is the first year that many SSAC members are also involved. It was a great citywide event, we even got nationwide coverage as well. It happened on MLK Day, everyone was invited, there was great speeches and we were able to march even though it was cold. We had a really good turnout and it was definitely one of my highlights.
Okay, my name is Zoe, by the way, I'm from Etzel Ford and I'm a junior. So I have the opportunity to apply again next year and I most definitely will. So one of the main things, biggest highlights I should say, of the SSAC was definitely Rotary Youth Month. Personally for me, it wasn't just about getting out of school every Thursday and going to eat lunch with a bunch of people. It was about the fact that I got to sit down with adults and have conversations that are not conversations you would have with other students, they're conversations you want to have with adults such as asking what I want to do and then genuinely being like interested in what I want to do. I actually got in contact with one of the Rotarians and I can talk to him about doing an internship out of country at some point and that to me is a very big and important thing. And I definitely wouldn't have gotten that opportunity ever without the SSAC or Rotary Youth Month. So besides that, I mean, the food, you know, it was pretty good too. But it was, it was definitely the Rotarians that made it. And we actually got to host the last meeting of Rotary Youth Month. Adam was our president and he did a fantastic job. Yeah, yeah, all those, all those happy bucks got us some snow days, right, Mr. Malaco?
Yeah, they were, they were putting it on there, a lot of pressure. It actually helped the Rotary fundraiser, so.
Yeah, it did, it did, and, and we got those snow days, mind you, so you're all welcome. But, but yeah, so.
We don't get snow days.
So Rotary Youth Month was a great experience and it was one of the, one of the good experiences that brought me closer to these three. They're all graduates, by the way, just to let you all know, they did it, they made it. I've still got one more year. But, so yeah, Rotary Youth Month, definitely a highlight of SSAC.
Okay, so another big project that we worked on is Diversity Summit. And the students that were here earlier kind of touched on and they talked about it. It was at the Civic Center and all three high schools were invited, it was a great event. Each high school had their own presentation with their own topic. Some talked about mental health, some talked about microaggressions. And we had our own presentations, it was a really good event and the diversity of students that were there was really a big part of it as well.
As Dr. Malaco said earlier, last year was the first year in which middle schools were integrated into this whole Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And we actually had a chance to sit down and speak to some of these middle schoolers at our last meeting. And it was really astonishing to sit down and speak to some of these middle schoolers because some of them had some really big ideas, bigger than themselves even. I mean, these are some young individuals with some great ideas. And we were really excited because we felt as if we could connect with these students. And they were just really excited to see what these students have and what they can offer moving forward and growing and learning through Dearborn Public Schools. So, you, as you guys can see, Dr. Malaco also helped us master the art of the selfie.
Boy, that comes natural.
Outside of SSAC, myself, Marwa, Zoe and Gadi got to know each other pretty well and we even took Zoe out on her birthday, so that was a lot of fun. And just SSAC in general was a phenomenal experience. Being, this is my last year in Dearborn Public Schools, I felt as if I got to do it all. I mean, I got to meet some phenomenal kids from other schools. I got to sit down to speak with some of the greatest administrators this, this district has yet to see. And we just really hope that Dr. Malaco continues with it as successful as it has been. So, thank you.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank the students for particularly the Real Dearborn March. I think that you really did an amazing job on that. You represented us, I mean, you put the real face of our community to the national audience and it was a really moving event, it's been great and I hope it's being planned again for this next year. And I just applaud you for coming up with the idea, it was really terrific.
Yes, Superintendent.
So as you can see, the students here and the great work you just hear and you them articulate. And I've said this in my speeches, graduation and otherwise, but they're the reason that, why them and many other students, but the connection I've had with them, that I have great hope for the, the future of this country, this city, because of the work they're doing. They're very proactive, it was a lot of hard work too, involvement. I also appreciate, you know, you talked about snow days and we were joking, but they gave me some good advice on how to deal with social media. Remember that one meeting I was asking you, how are we gonna deal when I'm getting some of these comments? And they told me, no, don't do this, do that, and I appreciated it. And the other thing is we're on a network with WhatsApp, so we communicated in between. We're on this network, we share pictures, sometimes joking. Sometimes they would continue to share with me knowing that myself and Ms. Charles were on the line. So it was really a great experience for me. I know Zoe, you are also the emcee at the Korematsu Day Celebration, which I know we've been doing that now three years, trustee Lane had mentioned that. And then the middle school as well, it was really neat because that was, actually was a recommendation from last year's council to move forward on that. And it was neat to see you guys interact and the mayor was at that event. So I'm very proud of them. I got my emoji board in my office that you created for me. And I could probably learn some things on selfies from you guys too. But anyway, it was a great year and I really thank all of you for your hard work and dedication. And again, we have a great future because of all of you and the others, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Charles, I think I thanked and the other group for helping support, so.
Next item, please.
Another special report, free and reduced lunch program.
And this was a request trustee Barry you had made a while back and so that's a response to.
Thank you.
Your request.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Lots of great things happening as always. One of the things that's been consistent here, I'm sorry if everyone, not everyone knows, I'm Ed Misher, Student Services and.
Jeff Murphy, Food Services.
Okay, so we just put a brief overview together of the free and reduced lunch program. You know, something that continues to grow, our percentages continue to climb as far as the amount of students who qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. Okay, first thing, what is it? What is the free and reduced lunch, lunch program? It's a federally assisted program for, for students who, you know, are in need of getting a free lunch. The lunches include the, the main four food groups so that, you know, we're obviously, they're obviously nutritional and they, they offer a good balance. The menu that takes quite a bit of time for Mr. Murphy to put together for, throughout, throughout the year, you know, encompasses a, a great deal of things. So he has to look at, you know, making, making sure that there's a good balance and you're not repeating the same thing so that students don't get tired of them and then including some new items and so on, so that students experience new foods as well. The household incomes that qualify are listed right there for you as far as what the, the percentage that's needed, you know, with consideration with the poverty level and the number of people who live in the household is always taken into consideration as well. Okay, so when we look at the identification process, first and foremost, every, any student, well, for, any household can, can put in an application for free and reduced lunch any, any time of the year. Okay, so the households can always do that. Sometimes we get three from the same household, which is obviously redundant and just, you know, requires a little more work on our part. But it's not like there's a penalty for it or anything else, so. Sometimes parents don't realize that if they have a middle schooler, an elementary child in a high school, they don't have to do three separate forms despite, you know, the fact that they do. Again, we still look at all of them and, and go from there. But this year, we, we, we had our CEP schools. CEP schools are schools that are eligible based on the number of direct certifications that the school has. What is a direct certification? A direct certification is basically when a family is already getting some kind of federal assistance. So if they're already receiving some kind of federal assistance, they would automatically be certified. So it's nothing that they don't have to apply or anything else, we just send them a communication. The Wayne County RISA gives us a, a list of students who are directly certified. And then we just send letters to all those families so that they know. Sometimes those families who are already certified for free lunch or for reduced lunch would still apply for, for the free lunch, but we obviously tell them you've already been approved and we send them just another communication or make a phone call and let them know. And then the schools get a list of all the students that have qualified for free and reduced lunch. That school, that, that list goes only to the principal and the cafeteria staff, correct? The, the list on there told you all the schools that were directly, were CEP schools this year. It only included elementary and middle schools, no high schools. Not because we don't have the numbers, but why do we not do high schools, remind me, sorry?
It, it's kind of a complicated process. You know, in, in, in past years, it used to be that there were, the application would help as far as the, what is the. With the CEP program, it's what's called a family survey rather than application. It's tied, tied to the Title I money. And we, we felt that being, that the high schools have such a large population, it'd be very difficult to get these.
The surveys, the survey, yeah, it's a little bit more difficult to get surveys from the high school age students as opposed to middle school students a lot of times. Okay, eligibility guidelines, one of the things we look at when eligibility guidelines again is the number of people in the household, the family size. And the family size, depending on the income, will, would tell us what, what kind of eligibility they would have, whether they be free lunch, reduced lunch, or obviously full pay. I'm not gonna read the numbers in the charts to you, those are all available, of course. The verification process, so.
Your PowerPoint.
Are you expecting that this is coming up on our screen because it's not?
A little bit of a technical difficulty.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not responsible for technical difficulties, I have my own difficulties.
That's right, we can get it on the screen.
We launched the computer halfway through the last presentation and clicked out for some reason.
It's okay, I just was wondering.
It's Troy's fault, he's.
And we have him in, everybody has it in the folder.
I'm looking at it.
Okay, so the verification process, basically when we get all the free, the free lunch forms and we, you know, we figure out whether the student's gonna be, based on the chart that's given to us by Wayne County RISA with all the numbers and so on on there. Okay, we determine whether they've, you know, the, we put the information into the system, the system says, okay, these people are qualified for free lunch. We send that off, we send the letters to the families and so on. Then Wayne County RISA will send us a random sample of three percent, three percent of the applications and say, okay, we need verification for this three percent. So we contact those families and we ask them for verification so they, they have to turn in things like tax returns, you know, proof of income, those types of papers. They bring those into our office. If a family chooses not to come in, if they've asked for verification, then that's their choice, but then obviously they go to full pay. They get thirty, thirty days to, to submit those papers. If they don't submit the papers within that time period, then obviously they go to full pay. So they return the papers for verification, we submit that documentation to Wayne County and then Wayne County will let us know if they're still free pay, if it's reduced or obviously if they, they go to full pay from there. Okay, our food service workers, what is their role in all of this? Obviously they have a lot of roles as far as, you know, preparing food and that type of thing and making sure that, you know, kids, that our students eat. But when the students come to the lunch line, everything's electronic now. They just swipe their, their, their ID or put their ID badge in front of the, the machine and it'll go out in there as far as, you know, whether they get free or reduced or, or they have to pay. Obviously they have to pay, they pay their money and they go from there. Our, our food service workers do a very, very good job throughout the district as far as making sure that, you know, all students eat, they get a meal. So now if they're full pay, then they charge and we go from there. They're allowed to charge meals but not snacks for, for obvious reasons. So, but they try to make sure between the, the food service workers and the administrative staff, the, the teaching staff, whoever's responsible in the cafeteria, that all students are eating. The food service workers also, you know, they're provided with a protocol as to how to handle situations when it comes to communicating with students and so on as far as if they have a balance or whatnot. So now if they do have a balance, the food service workers don't challenge them and say, hey, you owe seven dollars to the cafeteria in front of the, you know, everybody else. Basically, they report that information to the main office, a letter is generated and the letter goes out to the, to the families' homes telling them what they owe and so on. Again, their biggest role is to support students, promoting healthy eating, you know, making sure that those, that all students are getting some kind of food, you know, on a daily basis. And then they manage the student accounts. And I'll read you some of the data because you don't have it in front of you, but basically.
Ah, we do.
Now we do.
Oh, now you do, see, Troy came through, thank you Troy. Okay, so, so anyhow, so you see, you see our number continues to climb as far as the number. Every part of it is our population continues to go up as well. But the percentage is right around seventy-three percent, I believe, for this year as far as the number of students they get for your reduced lunch in the district. Any questions?
Trustee Barry.
Thank you for the report, answered most of my questions, but do we know the number of students that we actually apply for, for free lunch?
Yes, we do, is that, I can give you that number if I don't have it here, but yes, we do. We keep track of all the applications that, that we go through. Like I said, some, and they, there's two numbers because there's the number of some of the families, the households, that more than one, they applied for every individual child as opposed to just one for the household, but yes, I can get you those numbers.
Okay, that's fine because, you can get it later because I got a couple of follow-up questions too.
Sure.
So is it possible for a student to be on the free lunch list and not know about it?
Anything is possible, but it's unlikely because it's communicated with the family. The letters are all generated and sent home and it's taken right off the serve, like, I forget what, what it's called, but the, basically all the names are on the computer and then the, they take that file and merge it and it's a mail merge, that's what it's called. They mail merge it and then you get all the, the letters and the letters are sent home. Now sometimes parents might not communicate with their children and let them know that, hey, you're on free lunch or whatnot, so they may not know. Are there chances that sometimes parents don't get letters? And we have a letter that went out for disciplinary hearing and I know it went out a couple of times and they said, well, we didn't get a letter, so, I mean, I can't tell them that they did. I know the letters went out, but, so, you know, things like that happen.
So if the child is not aware that he's on the lunch list, free lunch list, and continues to pay cash, is that possible?
Yeah, of course, it's possible, but it'll only go on for so long before the cafeteria staff, you know, will fly and say, okay.
Thank you for saying that because I'm gonna share a little story with everybody why I started to get into this back in nineteen, back in nineteen, you started this.
Sorry.
Back in twenty twelve. There was a family, I won't mention what high school, but there was a family, you know, father was a entrepreneur, small business owner, I'll give you a quick story. Mom gets sick, he didn't know that there was a cap for his insurance, health insurance coverage. Mom was very sick, she's no longer with us. But when the mom was, the last time she went into the hospital, the hospital applied for Medicaid for her. So obviously that triggered that they qualify for, for lunch.
Direct certification.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I remember getting a report back then, it's, somebody mentioned that we must apply for them, but the law says we must notify them, correct?
Right.
So the student for like a semester and a half, been paying, 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 and one day he's there with a couple of his friends and the lady just told him right in front of his friends, why are you paying for your lunch when you're on the free lunch program? And we all can figure out what happened from there.
Right.
We don't need to get into it. People that are on that list, they don't, I mean, it's, it's, it's very embarrassing for the students, especially at the high school, and I know we do a good job, we do a very good job. And we don't call them out or anything, but. I'm looking at this, my numbers tell me that seventy-nine percent of our, maybe it's seventy-three percent that actually get free lunch, but it's high as seventy-nine percent, they're again, free and reduced lunch.
Free or reduced, right.
Twenty-one thousand students this year minus the sixteen-five. There was also a few years ago that one of our elected officials, nobody at this table, was actually, you know, open meeting, was marking a number of families on free lunch and obviously I was not happy with that and that's why I continued to do some cert research. I did speak to a couple of other districts. My question, I'm gonna have three questions to add to, and I look forward to that number that we actually apply for. The total amount received through the free and reduced lunch program from the grants, for the grants, the total amount received in cash payments to our district. And the big question here, I guess, is coming from the business world, is there a point where you can get, I mean, we might have passed that point already where it makes sense to give, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and say it, give everybody free lunch in our district? Is there a point where it makes sense, dollar-wise, where it will cost us less? I know what the big elephant in the room would be, but. Is there a point, I want you to take a look at it and see, I mean, obviously it takes away the stigma of, you know, kids on free lunch, especially at the high school level. We add more value to our district, everybody's getting us free lunch. And forty-five hundred students out of about twenty-one thousand plus don't get a free lunch or reduced lunch. Those are families that I'm sure that would appreciate it too. Now, with that being said, parents would have the option to still send bad lunch to school. I know I'm going, I mean, this is, I have a couple of districts that are doing this and very satisfied, very happy with the results, we can get to that a little later. But if you can come up with, you know, what does it cost us to collect the money, to go through the paperwork, who qualifies for free lunch, you know, we have some administrators that are looking into it. There's a lot of cost to that. We're at the point where we need to look at that and see maybe everybody gets a free lunch. Maybe I would be, I mean, I am waiting for that number of students that we actually apply for. That's important to me, thank you, thank you for that report.
No problem, just so you know, again, we try to prevent overt identification. Overt identification is exactly what you said in the story that you shared. We try to prevent it by, you know, posting memos and different things for the cafeteria staff and somebody slipped, you know, on our sets, our apologies to that family or to any family when those mistakes are made, but we try to do as much as we can to prevent these.
You're a hundred percent right, I agree with you there.
Trustee Thor.
When we look at the number of students that are in the free and reduced lunch program, it kind of boggles the mind when we're hearing about how great things are nationally, how low unemployment is, but still so many people are in so much need and we've only got a couple of days of school left. What happens to all these families during the summer? Are they, is there some programs that the district is offering or working in conjunction with to make sure these kids are getting their meals still?
Yes, we do provide summer programs and advertise that.
Thanks.
No, I am aware of a lot of programs that we offer and I know that we partner up with other organizations that offer lunch. I just had somebody reach out to me, they wanted names and, you know, families that can use a breakfast, you know, because it's real.
And haven't we had, I remember something I want to say from last summer that some of these groups wanted to go into our buildings to be able to use our kitchens to prepare the food? Do we do that or are we not able to?
As far as I know, Jeff can correct me, there were boxed lunches that they offered at, at the schools. I know Excess was a, a big community sponsor of some of those lunches.
And they were delivered to different sites.
Okay, but they're not really, they're not using our buildings to prepare any?
Not to prepare, they do our cafeterias or something maybe to distribute, but.
Okay.
The other thing I just mentioned is, you know, we're working with Tom and Mike Rangos and Jeff's on the committee and we've had a committee that's gone out to look at other districts through a food services RFP to, to look at the potential of expanding a lot of our options for food, healthy, whether that be breakfast, whether that be after school, healthier options. And so the committee, you know, Jeff's on it, Tom, Mr. Wall's on it and trustee, trustee Nasser, you've been out working on that, you did the visit with two of them. And so we're gonna be looking at those things. And part of it for me came from the student council, actually, and Ms. Charles is nodding because she remembers about two, two years ago, students asked for these expanded options. So I think anytime we can increase the number of individuals that are getting meals, whether that be in the summer, after school, before school, it's a positive. And then just enhancing, you know, healthier choices and things of that nature. And so there's more to come and I know the trustees have been, you know, well informed of the process. of the process we've been going through with that, and I think that will be another, you know, aspect to help. And we've looked at some other districts and I've talked to other superintendents about how they've been, you know, working with their models and so I think that's another positive. The other thing they look at is food waste, they have ways to quantify it, I know Mr. Murphy's done some of that as well, but they have ways to actually, for preventable, so that's another aspect of it as well.
Trustee Lane?
I assume that we're still using or allowing the sharing table?
Yes.
So that students don't unnecessarily create more waste that can be used?
It's very successful to share tables, the kids love that.
Okay, good.
For those kids who would like extra, there's always something there for them.
Good, good, that's great, I'm glad to hear that. I would like to know whether we're using styrofoam trays still, I haven't been to a cafeteria lately, but there are other options, you know, and styrofoam doesn't break down for four hundred and fifty years, so.
The styrofoam trays that we use are biodegradable.
They are, okay.
Yes.
Good.
We made that change about four years ago.
Great, Ms. Thornton should hear that, she was one that came up here all the time complaining about that. I'm so glad to hear that, really.
You're right, she did, yeah.
Any other discussions?
Mr. Murphy, do you know if there's a federal regulation? I've been told by some people that it's against a federal regulation to take food out of garbage or the bin, even if it's individually wrapped. Then I've also heard from another teacher that there is no federal regulation, it's a urban myth, so do you know on that?
We're part of the National School Lunch Program, you know, part of the regulations for that, you know, we need to make sure that the food that we're providing for the kids are consumed by the kids. So if they were to take food home, we don't know that it's them that are actually consuming that product, so, yeah, it's not something that we can do. I know there's a lot of people who feel it makes sense to allow, you know, if there's extra food, that you should be able to just take it home, but we want to make sure that the kids are eating, you know, at the site so that we know that they're consuming.
So in other words, if there's an apple that's put on the sharing table, we don't allow that to go home?
It, no.
Oh, oh, that's a whole different thing, I didn't understand that.
I mean, they can certainly eat it.
Well, I suppose you're not, maybe I better not even say, ask whether you're enforcing it or not, you don't really know what goes home in a backpack, but, hmm, okay, so if somebody has a string cheese or something, oh, interesting, okay.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say, so I went, I went on two school visits with two different companies that have food services at Grand Blank High School and at Woodhaven Brownstown. What they have there is multiple options, so with our calendar that gets sent home every month for the lunches, you basically have a main course, a couple sides and a drink, and then you have a cheese pocket or a pizza as your, as your second, second choice. So both of the schools, both of the schools that we had gone to, school districts, so in each school district, we went to an elementary, middle school and high school, they have different presentations of how all the food is presented, so many more options, so many more stations that you can go through, students are able to get through multiple, multiple stations and whether you're on free and reduced or you're paying, it's a very swift and efficient system between both, both companies. So I'm really looking forward to this whole process.
And Mr. Wall, they offered us the ability to test and Mr. Wall tested the temperature of every food product out there, so, Mr. Wall.
Did you get a chance to test the food too?
We did.
Yes, yes.
We all did, we all did.
That was the benefit of being on the.
I don't think that's legal.
Just so you know, we do offer a second option for students, but it changes, like they don't want, their choice won't get choice two on a daily basis.
At the middle school and high school level, there are more choices than just two.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, please.
Next item, action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? After all, we will exclude them.
Trustee Thorpe?
I had a question for Mr. Wall on item number seventeen and possibly a comment on that one. It doesn't need to be polled, thanks.
Just a question, anybody else?
Can I just mention, number twenty-eight, the supplement, it went through the policy committee for the student approval and that was in board briefs.
I'd like to ask you a question about the Chromebooks also.
You want to ask a question about Chromebook?
Yeah, yeah, they're there.
And which item is that, three, four and five?
Three, four, five.
Three, four and five?
Yeah, just.
Questions, but don't poll.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you summarize that, Mr. Secretary?
You got it, sir.
All right.
Recommended action, move that action items one through eight be approved as recommended in this agenda.
One through twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
I missed a number, didn't I? Move that action items numbered one through twenty-eight be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So move, support.
Go back.
Questions on number three, four and five, trustee Lane?
I'm just curious about the life expectancy of the Chromebooks that we're purchasing and that would be Mr. Patterson's department, but Dr. Maleko, maybe you could get that to us later.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I noticed they're also non-touch and I wondered if that's for some reason, are touchscreens more difficult or do they have a shorter lifespan or?
I do know, I can comment that I know that the Chromebooks have been a very popular feature, we've been using them across and the students seem to like them too because they're so connected to Google and it's been something that's been expanding, but I'll get more information then from Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, number seventeen, trustee Thorpe?
This was for a contract for renovation of Dearborn High's baseball field and it was for just over a hundred thousand with a fifteen thousand dollar contingency and the vendor went over all those amounts by an additional twenty-three hundred dollars, which isn't much, but if we're giving vendors a budget and then a contingency and they still go over and there's no explanation here as to why, when do we go back to the vendors and say, you've got to live within the budgets and not just keep coming back to us for additional money?
So Dr. Ball ran that project, so I'll let him explain it.
Okay.
The handoff, I love it.
You got my back, right?
Yes.
To answer your question, we, when we were doing the renovation work on the Ball Nine at Dearborn High, we ran into some issues with the programming for the automatic sprinkler system and we had to realign some of the sprinklers, we also had to update the card that runs the entire system, so that's the additional cost that we incurred, it was something we didn't know about until we got into the program or got into doing the renovation work.
Shouldn't the contingency be able to take care of that usually though?
Usually, yes, but this was over and over and we thought we were going to have to deal with the sprinkler system.
Okay, I just want to make sure that when we're getting the bids for all these different projects with our vendors, that this is the amount that we're setting, we expect you to be somewhere close and not come back to us later for additional dollars. Thank you.
I don't really have Dr. Ball's back because it's way too big for me to cover, but I will say on our agendas, Mr. Wall and anybody else who does purchasing, I mean, we don't see this very often that we go over a contingency, so I would, I appreciate your catching.
Or if they do, they'll give us a reason why, I mean, there was an item in here on additional fire suppression and other changes that have come, this one is just saying that it went over.
Well, we, it's great that you caught it, I think that's a good thing and I think it's good to question it, but I would just say we do manage millions of dollars of construction projects, we've done a quarter of a billion dollars worth of buildings and renovations in the last ten to twenty years and it's pretty amazing. And I just, I feel proud as a Dearborn citizen that those projects have come in on time and they've come in on budget and sometimes slower.
We'll make sure those are also included in the future.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous and next item, please.
Read the summary of the action items.
Somebody has to read the summary, that must be you.
You want to do it?
No, no, thanks.
We're more happy to handle.
No, no, no.
Summary of agenda action items, number one, approval of warrants, number two, approval of purchase of Pitney Bowls mail machine, number three, four and five is approval of purchase of non-touch Chromebooks and Google management licenses for Unischool, Etzaway High School and Salina Intermediate School. Number six, approval of the purchase of Rithium boards, projectors and equipment for Lori Middle School. Number seven, approval of the purchase of Eureka math manipulative basic kits from Didax. Number eight, approval to increase the contract with ABI, SBL to include equipment costs, professional integration services and maintenance services. Number nine, ten and eleven, approval of change orders. Number twelve, approval of a contract to Johnson, approval of a contract to Johnson Controls for HVAC repair and maintenance per report number seventeen dash one-two-five. Number thirteen, approval of contract to Johnson Controls for temperature and energy controls per board report seventeen dash one-twenty-six. Number fourteen, approval of contract to David Turf Services for ninety days. Number fifteen, approval to increase the master contract with Tyco for upgrades to existing security software. Number sixteen, approval installation of Tyco fire system upgrades at Dearborn High. Number seventeen, approval to increase the contract for water management specialists for completing their renovations at Dearborn High School baseball field. Number eighteen through twenty-one, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through twelve. Number twenty-two, approval of financial statement. Number twenty-three, approval of naming of the Fortson Gymnasium. Number twenty-four, approval of the ratification of the Association of Dearborn Schools Administrator's Contract. Number twenty-five, approval of extension of exemption to Administrator's Contract. Number twenty-six, approval of board study session of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Number twenty-seven, approval of donations. And number twenty-eight, approval of high school student requiring board review to graduate. That's all over, Dr. Meechan.
Thank you.